You're watching CHCO TV's gavel to gavel coverage of the October 22nd, 2024 Special Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. In today's meeting, committee will discuss the 2025 municipal budget. Now let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garselin Civic Center in St. Stephen.
Welcome everyone. To the Municipal District of St. Stephen Special Committee of the Whole Meeting Agenda for Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 at 6:00 PM. Call to order. Before we begin, I'd like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory of the Past Miquadi Peoples. So let's get right down to business here. I need a mover and seconder for the agenda for the Special Committee meeting of the Whole, October 22nd, 2024, be approved. Councilor Wright, Councilor Eastman, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Now we're ready to jump break in. Oh, sorry, any conflicts of interest? Seeing none? Alright, let's go into the 2025 municipal budget. Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, your worship. So the intention for tonight is to start our discussions around our, the development of the 2025 budget, specifically focusing at this point on the, the operating budget. One of the things we talked about during strategic planning sessions and stuff was, whoop, there we go. Councilor Cornish. Was getting council a little bit more involved a little earlier in the game as far as the budget development cycle, giving you a chance to get a little bit more familiar with the, the thinking that we've been doing kind of behind closed doors in the, in past years. So I thought the best place to start is kind of the same place I start every year, which is looking at our revenue sources for the year. So we won't get into departmental budgets yet, we'll just be looking at where the money comes from, how we generate it, and kind of what the, what the, how we've approached the initial draft of the 2025 budget, as far as what resources we're going to have. My intention, and I've done this with past councils, not in St. Stephen, but in other jurisdictions during budget development, is once we've kind of got a sense of the basic, baseline revenue, as we go through departments and as we start saying, getting comfortable with departmental plans, we, I usually stick the, the total revenue up in the corner of the screen, and as we approve things, I kind of show that coming down, so that we can see the impact of the decisions as, as they go. And of course, once that number gets, if that number gets into a negative position, then we have to revisit our revenue side and decide, are we cutting something, are we raising taxes, are we getting out of the reserves? So this is the, the primer, the, the, should be the relatively easy part of, of, of the revenue side. I don't think there's too much controversy here, but I just want to give you an opportunity to, again, to question some of the line items here, what goes in, what goes out, whatever, whatever's interest of you, and we'll just get started from there. So, I can get my computer to advance the slide for me here. Alright, so sources of municipal revenue, these are the basics, what we have, property taxes, services we provide to other governments, which we'll talk about a little bit, sale of services, own source revenue, things we generate for ourselves, unconditional grants, conditional transfers, and other general revenue that comes in. As far as the key ones here, in 2024, property taxes were 67% of, of the total revenue that we brought, we bring in in a year. That's pretty standard for municipality, we're heavily, heavily reliant on, on property tax until, until if and when municipal reform gives us some new fiscal tools, we'll always be heavily reliant on our property taxes. Only 2% is services provided to other, other governments. 4% is sale of our, of our own services. 2% again on own source revenue. Unconditional grants, which we often will, will know as the equalization grant, is about 12% or was in 2024. And conditional transfers, that's a rounding up to 1%. You'll see on the slide, it's kind of a catchall for some funding that may, that especially in the past, used to come in from the federal and provincial governments to support programs, that has over the years kind of disappeared, and we, we keep the line items there in case they ever reemerge, but they're, they're not very well funded. And then others 12%, and we'll get into the details of what, what's classified in there, because it is a big number, but you'll see how it's broken down. So starting with the first one, property taxes, this is the basic formula, it's your assessed value times your property tax rate. The assessed value, provided by GNB, which council is aware that we're anxiously awaiting the delivery of our tax base for the 2025 year. The, the, is, from according to the deputy minister, it needs to go to a cabinet meeting, so Premier-elect Holt needs to assemble her cabinet and, and get her cabinet meetings going before we're going to get those numbers. So we've got a little bit of time before we see that, which is, again, why I wanted to just start pushing, and you'll see the way that we've approached this. The property tax rate, of course, we, we know we have multiple property tax rates at the moment, and as the note says, we have applied to unify the rural tax rate into, into one taxing subunit. The, when we talked to the bureau, the bureaucrats before the election, we were told we were going to get an answer to that application before the election, but it got caught up in the election, now they can't announce anything until Premier Holt takes office. So we're, we're anxiously waiting on some more information from GNB. But if we look at 2024, this is a, a summary of how it went down. You can see there the, the difference in residential, non-residential, and heavy industry, and, and the total amount of taxes that, that, that those assessments created. Again, it was a very simple summary, there's lots of different tax rates in there depending on which jurisdiction the properties are in, but bottom line is we raised just, just under $9 million from, from property taxation in 2024. So 2025, obviously our assessment base is currently unknown. We could have worked with an assumption of saying the assessments are going to grow by 3% or 5% or whatever our best guess was. Current draft one assumes that there is no change to the assessed values, essentially a status quo budget. There is benefit to that in the, in the sense that if the assessments do grow, it gives the options to council about how to deal with that growth. It would generate, if you didn't change the tax rates, it would generate more revenue, which could be put towards council priorities, whether that's asphalt, or communications, or whatever, or tax decreases, if that was the decision of council. It gives you that opportunity to, to use those, that, that growth, however you see fit. But at this point in time, we're going to, we're assuming no change. So in services provided to other governments, the first one is rural firefighting. You may recall from last year's budget, we get paid by some of the rural areas to cover them, we pay the rural areas to cover certain parts of us. It's still an ongoing dialogue about where those lines are and should be, and, and to try and rationalize those, but that's, that will take time with the Fire Marshal's Office. The reason the rural firefighting in 2025 is blue is that's another number that comes from GNB. Our friend next door, Darren McCabe, will, will calculate, do a bunch of calculations based on formulas and issue that to us in the near future. So for now, we're assuming the same as last year.
Can you clarify rural, it's not rural, it's private district?
It's, it's going into the world, the rural community. So it's going outside the MDSS. So yeah, it's, the other thing we do, local government dispatching, we, this used to be a, a pretty good revenue generator for us, we used to dispatch for a lot of the local municipalities, we're basically down to one contract now, and I think it's St. Andrew's Public Works that we, after hours and things, we're, we're their com, their comm center, which is why it's only $1,200, we don't expect any change there. Designated highways, this is funding that comes into us because we have designated highways in our community to help us with paving and things like that, and maintenance. That number's gone up, that's, that should be an accurate number based on the documentation we've gotten from GNB, their rates change from time to time, so, to help out with, with some of the costs. And same with the highway markings, highway markings were quite low for quite a while, and I think that's come up a bit. So you see a little bit of growth there. And then regional recreation cost sharing is the, the agreement put together by the RSC, managed by the RSC, that Hollis talked about at the last meeting. I'd love to say that that's all revenue that's coming in at $219,000 for 2025, but we do have a significant outlay that you'll see on the expense side. We net about 35 to 40, I think it's $35,000 or $40,000, Hollis said for this year, but it is a, it does show as a revenue on this side of the books. So any questions on any of that? Happy to take.
My question is just on the previous, when you were speaking about the assessed value from GNB, is there, do they actually share publicly how they determine their assessed values or what formula they use? Because I know community members often say they feel like when the real estate market values went up, their assessed values of their properties went up, and in the past, they haven't felt that it was that way. So I didn't know if the government is open or transparent about how they decide and calculate their own GNB assessed values, because that definitely would impact the property taxes of our citizens based on, you know, the final outcome when we set ours.
Sure. GNB actually has a really good website, their assessment services division has a really good website that shows, tries to explain their, their processes. It is supposed to be market-based assessments, so if all the houses around you sell for high numbers, in theory, your, your property value should increase, your assessment should increase. The application of, of the assessment reassessments and things have been, has been sketchy over the years, I know UMB has been working on this, and so sometimes places get missed, but, but yeah, it's supposed to be, the, the value of your, the rule has, is supposed to be the, the value of your home with a willing, willing buyer and a willing seller. And that's the ideal, but we know there's properties out there that are undervalued or, and I can think of at least one that's probably overvalued based on things that happened in the, in the course of the, of the year. But that's what it's supposed, that's how it's supposed to work. They continue to, assessment services, I will give them credit, they used to be, they've been working very hard over the last, oh, three to five years at improving the way they do things, the timing of the notices, getting out to the, so, they, you know, they're, they realize they weren't perfect either, and they've been working very hard to improve their systems, and I suspect that they will continue to do so. But, but yeah, that's, that's how the assessment is supposed to work, and, and we can, we can put a, some information with the, with the website for the, the assessments for anybody that's interested as well, we can put it on our, on our, on our website.
It'd be nice if they could do like a blanket approach and do everyone, but the problem is they do a 20% pocket, that's what we're seeing, and then we can't, like, like we could have everyone assess it, I'll just be crazy here, a million dollars, but we can put the tax rate number, as you saw it there, very low, and still pay the same amount of tax, but can't do it when they don't do everybody, and it makes it very challenging when we're setting that rate. Councilor Wright?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say that Council of Greenlaw had been in communications with Service New Brunswick sometime, I think it was last year, and Service New Brunswick had volunteered to send somebody to do a discussion if we're ever feel our, our citizens would like that, and they would talk specifically about the assessment side of things and how their process works. So might be something to consider in future. I know we have a lot on the go, and it may not happen this year, but it might be something to do for next spring to set the groundwork.
Yeah, just, that's what I was speaking to you, is the discrepancies between the areas, like if you think about Oak Bay, I mean, you have Hills Point Road, and there's tons of really high-end houses on that road, but all surrounding it are just average, you know, homes in Oak Bay. So I just find when I'm driving out through the rural areas and even within town, like you could have, you know, three to five houses sell at a great rate, but then, you know, you have these low-income seniors that are living in these tiny little dwellings and still experiencing change, and for a senior, that's, that's a huge change. So I'm hoping that too, that we could, if UMB is looking at giving that feedback so that we can say, we need to find out something that actually works for rural municipalities. We are a rural municipality, and it's, it's not the same as the city where it's just like, you know, South End Fredericton, North End Fredericton, like, I find that all of our homes vary across this whole district, and that's the biggest challenge when you're driving around thinking, how is that assessed at this, and how is that assessed at that? So it's a lot of advocacy work on UMB's end, but we have a director here, so.
The, the, I'm on the Municipal Assessment Committee for UMB, and the government right now is looking at, in the next three years, implement a $45 million system to try to help some of the issues, but right now it's very, very inconsistent. There are people hugely undervalued, there are people, you know, that are overvalued, and then there's the rest that are kind of subsidizing, because, you know, they, they've been reassessed several times in 10 years, there's people out there that haven't been reassessed in 10 years. And so the, the government's aware of it, Service New Brunswick's aware of it, it's more about what they say, it's about their resources and their ability to do it all. So anyway, that's, that's where we are now, we're working through it, so hopefully the new government that comes in will continue with that program to try to fix it.
So the others, so that's, yeah, so that's our, our services provided to other levels of government. Obviously, we're sitting in a facility that's designed to sell services, so this is where a lot of this comes in. So we do sell some fire services, a lot of that, a lot of that has to do with checking extinguishers and, and doing work like that, not, not a lot of revenue there. The outdoor pool, it is a free pool, but it does generate some revenue over the year for private bookings and things like that. I know some scuba diving outfits like to rent it and, and to do training and things like that. We are expecting, we, we went with $9,000 in 2024, I think our actuals are coming in a little lower than that, so we kind of adjusted based on, and, on that, on trending. Outdoor recreation programs, you see a, a pretty good increase there in the, in the revenue. That's largely down, down to the, the new programming being offered by, by Aaron, our aquatics and program, program coordinator, with the multi-sport stuff that was going on in Milltown, which was a huge success, and we're hoping to build on it as we go forward. So it's been on our list of things to get, to get Aaron on, and he finally took the ball and ran with it this year, so we're going to keep that going. Oak Bay Community Hall, obviously we've taken over the, the management of that, so just going with the status quo budget on that one. Vendor's Market, I mean, that, that was a new thing for us this year, we, we didn't necessarily expect to run it, but we did stand in and do it. So the $3,500 is revenue that's generated off of there. When we get into the expense side, you'll see that we always had the philosophy that anything we, we gained from the market vendors was going to be spent back to either improve the market or hold special events for the market to support the, those vendors. So when we get into the, the community services budget, you'll see the, the offset of that, but we're going to, we plan to continue to operate it unless some private entity decides to make a pitch to us. Playing field user fees, again, this is only are the one set of fields that we, we operate, which is the ones behind the Legion. We have ongoing discussions with Angleton South School District about next summer, and if we do reach a, an amicable conclusion to those conversations, it's very possible that this revenue would be higher, because we, we would keep the, the user fee revenue over the summer if we were managing it. But for now, we're, we're going with a conservative look at it, and so that's, that's that. Yep?
That's another thing that, that I actually personally push at the UMB as well, and then they fall to it, every mayor, every municipality supported, working with, having the, the province school, school board work with the municipalities in the, in the province on a fair rate, and that's one thing, it was very common, and it was unanimously supported, so everyone supported. So that's, that's going to come out, that's going to have some power behind that, so I'm very happy to see that. Okay, sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Do you mean that they would come in and try to standardize it in some sense, and
ensure that all districts and municipalities are collaborating and have some sort of a fair idea?
Yeah, so we got all these facilities in our communities, and especially small communities, if you got 10 basketball courts, you use 10 basketball, you don't build more, and that's the whole idea, and same with the fields, and same with the, well, P fields, and some tennis, tennis courts and stuff, and anyways, but it's, yeah, they're going to look at the whole thing and, and build that, that contract or whatever to, to work fairly for everyone. Sorry? Yeah, that's, yeah, exactly, yeah. And what, what he just said, he has his mic on, is gyms and auditoriums, exactly, yeah. So hopefully something good comes out of that. Sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
Any other on that slide? Nope, alright, we'll go to the next part of sales services, which is, you see, all these start with the letters GCC, because it is the lifeblood of this facility. So you can see there the, the pool revenue that we expect to bring in, we under budgeted in 2024 based on trending, so we're correcting that to reflect what's, what we're seeing. Arena revenue, we're, that, arena revenue is one that's a great example of why this document, until the day you guys raise your hands and finally prove it, will keep changing. We're discussing with, with Mr. Sumner this afternoon about the arena revenue and the canteen revenue, which is going to be, going to be hit by the fact that the Irishmen are not playing 16 home games or 13 home games with us this year. So we are, we will be adjusting those numbers. It'll be, for the canteens, from what I understand, from, from Ms. Vest, it could be about a $50,000 hit to our revenue. Yes, there'll be some costs that we don't incur because on, that we, for security and things like that on game day, but it does, it does hit our, it does hit us when we lose those things. So we will, we'll continue to work with the powers that be to try and bring it back, but, in the future, but yeah, so you'll see, this is draft one, draft two will have different numbers, I'm sure, as we go forward. Memberships have been holding pretty well, so we're, we're not moving the budget very much there. Same with the conference rooms, pretty much holding it there. Let's say the canteens, we are predicting higher revenue because we were, we're getting such good revenue off of the games, so that will come, be coming back down. The special events line, that is a line that's an in and out, we use that mainly for events that we, we expect to be revenue neutral or generate a profit. And so the only time we can use those funds that are identified there, the, the funds in the expense side, is if we know that we're going to create enough revenue to cover it. So it's a, it's an offsetting line for things like the, the Sea Dogs game that we hosted, would have flowed through there in 2024, whereas the community events like Canada Day and, and those things that don't generate money have, have their own, their own, their own item under a different event, so just a little bit of a differentiation there. Promotional items for promotional stuff for the GCC, holding it the same. Recreation programs, again, that's starting to build a little bit more, do more things other than just the aquatics and, and the arena, so a little bit of funding expected there. And then other revenue, we get, we get the odd thing here and there that comes through here, so it's just a, it's just a place that we can code that for about $4,300. So sales services accounts for, you know, we're expecting about $632,000 next year, which is, which is pretty good, pretty good return. Obviously, this facility does cost, and we'll see that on the expense side, but that is a revenue generator for, on the revenue side. Own source revenue, so this is stuff that we have the, the power to create ourselves. Animal licenses, we, we keep that number, if you see $100 or $150 in a line, we keep the line open for accounting purposes, we don't tend to get a lot of things that go through there, unfortunately. Building permit fees is one that we do track very closely, we are expecting an, an uptick based on our 2024 trending and some projects that we're expecting to come through in 2025. So we're looking at an uptick in, in permit fees. Again, stamping plans and needs, we don't do that very much. The signed permit fees, again, it's a relatively small. Taxi licenses, we haven't had to do those in a, in a while, as you know. And municipal fines, we always budget on the, for municipal fines, that we use, we use a philosophy that bylaws there to get compliance, not to generate revenue. Doesn't mean that there, it's only going to be $100, but we leave $100 in there because we're not, we don't, we never want the bylaw officer to think he has a quota to hit or anything like that for budget purposes. If he puts fines in, it'll go into, into the actuals that you guys will see, but we never budget for it. We expect, we, we hope our citizens are compliant and we don't have to get to finding of, for bylaw infractions. Any, any questions, comments on that slide?
With, with the building permit fees, would they go up like everything else? I mean, I know you said you're expecting more, right? But is there ever a hike in the, the amount of the fees?
Yeah, we take recommendations from, from Alex Anderson and his crew, because of course they, they handle ours, but they also handle a lot of other municipalities in the area, to make sure our bill, our, our fees are competitive with other jurisdictions. He has looked at those, he hasn't yet made a suggestion to me that we should look at changing the, the permit fees. I think they're more focused right now on the municipal plan and zoning bylaws and getting those sorted, and, but, but I can check with him and see if, if he's going to recommend a, a fee structure change.
So is the municipal fines piece, is that pretty standard across most municipalities in the way that they just don't put anything on that budget line for that reason? I mean, because I'm sure it can go either way, right?
Yeah, I mean, it's, there are, certainly the big cities, I mean, who have far more fines on a regular basis, whether that's parking fines or whatever, probably, I would, I assume that they, they would budget for a base minimum. But in smaller communities, in my experience, we typically try and, and work with compliance first and revenue generation as a, as a distant second. But, but yeah, I mean, again, I never like to incentivize the bylaw officer, or make it feel like he needs to hit a quota, you know, it's, it's, it just doesn't make for a good approach to dealing with clients who may be in, in, not in violation, but finding might be not the best first step if you're looking, if your, if your goal is compliance. Also own source revenue, we do own a few buildings that we rent out to other agencies. They do generate us some revenue, they do have some costs, as you, as we've talked about in this room before, the two, the two key ones being Five Kings Restaurant and the RCMP detachment. But they do, there is a bit of an increase there, the RCMP detachment just got their renewal through and, and the, the rental fees did, did increase there, per the agreement. Banking interest, I went over this with Mr. Godso this afternoon, about, just because it was such a big increase. Quite frankly, we did, we've done quite well with interest rates as far as some of the investments we've had in keeping our money in the bank. That may be changing in the next little bit based on rumors about what's going to happen with interest rates, but based on trending, this is actually, what we're predicting in 2025 is actually less than what our actuals are trending in 2024, so we did cut it back a little bit. And miscellaneous is, there's lots of things that flow through miscellaneous, a lot of it is grants that come and go, and specifically grants where we get the grant ahead of the time of our expense, and when we actually incur the expense, we have to bring the, bring it in at a deferred revenue, so it flows through this miscellaneous account. It jumps around a little bit as far as what is appropriate to have to budget, budget in there, but Frank took a, a look at what was expected, and he's comfortable with the 335, so a bit more coming in in 2025, we expect. Unconditional grants, this is the, like I said, this is the equalization grant. In 20, the number for 2024 is there on the screen, 1.6 million and change. I'm expecting that to decrease, now I've been a little heavy-handed because not, there's a couple of sides to this equation. One side of this equation is, is decreasing by about 20% per year as it phases itself out. Because I'm doing revenue and it's an early draft, I did 20% of the whole darn, of the whole thing, took it, took it away to be conservative until, until they announced their number for us, but, so even until the first draft has a significantly lower budget, I, I suspect the number's going to come in higher than that, so it'll be a, a bit of a bonus when it does come in, but just being extra conservative on the, on the revenue side. You see, this is what I mentioned earlier, the federal provincial funding for different parts of programs, we keep the lines open in the, in, in the hope that they will reappear from some good government, but at this point, there's not a, we haven't had money go through those typical accounts in probably the entire time I've worked here, probably five, six years at least, so. Other transfers, second year surplus, this is always one of the, well, favorites and least favorites when, when, when you look at it. In 2024, we carried in 574,175 from 2022 surplus. The work that's currently ongoing in the back rooms is identifying that will be close to 900,000 coming in for the 2025 budget, still to be confirmed, which is why I put it in blue. The big thing here is that while we, this is a bit of a boon, when we look at the expense side, we have to be very careful that anything we want to rely on this money for really needs to be a one-off, a one-time expense, because we've started trying to put it into, this money isn't going to be there every year, and hopefully, as our books get caught up, our surpluses should shrink, because at the end of the year, we should be putting, transferring those funds into reserves, and these second year surpluses should be a lot smaller in the next going, years coming ahead. So it's going to be great for, you know, there's 400,000 or whatever there that asphalt sidewalk, whatever the priorities end up being when we get into those conversations, those are great for one-offs, you know, get that road done, get, get that sidewalk done, whatever it is, so, you know. So, you know, look at that when we get into the expense side. And then operating reserve draw is another way we technically create revenues. We pull money out of our reserves and put it into our current year expense books. We are not planning at this point in time to do that. In twenty twenty-four, we budgeted zero, but you may recall, we've drawn for a couple of key projects in the, dealing with the finance department over the last little while. The reserve schedule, we'll look at that probably the next time we all get together. The finance crew is currently finishing up twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. So I can give you a January one twenty twenty-five, like, opening balance on those reserves. And we can make a good plan about how we're going to fund capital, fund whatever from those reserves. So that conversation will be separate and coming. But right now, we're not predicting, or not suggesting to draw at this point. Admin costs recapture from utility, one of those things that tends to go under the radar that happens inside our budget. Obviously, the utility is run by the same staff that run the rest of things around here. And because it's a separate company, we, the municipal district, actually charges the utility company a prorated cost of salaries and recaptures that to let the utility isn't being subsidized by the general populace, which would be illegal. So we do, we charge ourselves. And so we're looking at in twenty twenty-five, the predicted valuation is about one point three million coming in from the utility side. There are conversations that we are having, and that we'll have with you folks, on the utility side that may bring that number down based on different decisions we make on the operations of the utility going forward. It's kind of a double-edged sword because it makes the cost of the utility go down, but it also takes away revenue from the operating side. So we're going to have to balance those scales carefully. But that's, that's why you, I have you guys to make those policy decisions for me. Anything on those three items? Oh, over there.
So do we know exactly where the, obviously, twenty twenty-three is where the nine hundred and seven thousand is coming from, Craig? So do we know exactly where those surpluses came from, like what line items we had them on?
We're working on it. I've asked for that over the years, it's been hard to get. Frank has said, he's done a quick, very quick variance analysis for me on a few things. But we need to get a little bit more into details of that so that we can have that when we talk about expenses and whether there's over budgeting in certain areas or whether these were projects that were deferred or whatever. So I know exactly, I know what you're thinking, and it's definitely on the radar. So that gets us kind of the end of the summary. So if you bring it all together and put them side by side, the current draft with, which assumes no tax rate changes and no assessment-based changes, we're looking at revenue, total revenue of thirteen million eight hundred and fifty-three thousand three hundred dollars to work with for moving forward. That's, again, you see the increase, most of that increases in that second year surplus that's coming in. So that's kind of where we're at. Like I said, my goal here was to kind of get this, this number and be able to put it on the screen as we have our other conversations. So we keep reminding ourselves that every time we make a decision, we are spending this money, and we can be cognizant of how that's happening. That being said, I mean, if there's anything on this slide, I'll probably take questions. But if there's anything, if there's not, I have a couple of questions for you folks before we wrap up. So my question for you folks is whether you have a preference as to how to approach the expense side of the operating. My intention is to bring it department by department. But whether, if you want to see certain departments before other departments, that's fine. Or you can, or I can bring them in the order, whatever order I, that I want to bring them. It's up to you folks, I want to make sure the conversations go the way you want them, so. Because obviously, we know that there's, we know public works is a big one. We know enforcement and protective services is obviously an important one to the community and an important one to deal with some of the issues that we have in our community right now. So we can put those earlier in the agenda. And like, things like the CIO office, which is administrative and rather boring, can go later. Or we can do the CIO's office, which I think is probably one of the easier ones first to get some momentum behind it. It's whatever you guys want, I just want to deliver what you would like to see, if you have a preference. If you don't, the team and I will just work and we'll make a game plan that we think works for you.
See them, that's, I don't care what order.
Highest to lowest.
What's that?
Highest to lowest.
The RCP, and they're not going to give me that number for a number of weeks either.
It's on how the information's coming in and then how it works, also we can see them.
Really, and my intention is really to try and do this, kind of like this in bite-sized pieces so that we can, I mean, obviously, on the expense side, we're probably, we're going to get far more into priorities and questions and answers, and I'm sure we're going to get into depth there. But rather than, as we have in the past, showing up with a thirteen and a half million dollar budget and say, you know, make you drink from the fire hose and say, here, take it. I want to do it in more, smaller pieces, you guys understand it, we do it in a nice open forum. Hopefully, the public gets to see the videos and gets to understand it as well. Because I think that really helps with everything that's going on, the more understandable we try to make this. And of course, getting out, you know, and doing the community open houses or however we're going to do the budget consult is still on the table. But this is, this is just like step one, taking the foundation. And, but we can do that, we can start to, the ones that are ready, we'll bring. But it may be, you know, just one department at some meetings, it may be two departments at another meeting.
Council Greenlaw?
Can we go with the ones with the largest delta, like the ones that would have increased the most? And start with those because we want to probably grind those ones down a little bit more. And I know some of the stuff, no, I didn't like the RCMP contract. But, you know, other than that, like, for instance, if it was public works, and public works went up six or eight percent. But, you know, the administration here went up three, you know, I'm just thinking.
Yeah, I'm trying to refresh my memory here, I've been looking, seeing through the first draft. I would say the great, probably all the departments are within the same range of the basic budget, right? Now, whether we decide, and we get to the CIO's office, say, and we talk about, do we need, do we need a dedicated HR person, do we need a contracted HR person, do we not need an HR person? Like, those conversations, obviously, will, could potentially change that delta significantly. So we have budgeted basically largely a status quo budget, not asking for a lot. But as you recall, the, you may recall, the draft pre-budget, the document that I did for the CIO's office, there's a section in there that says, if you wanted to look at changes, and we do both pluses and minuses, here are some key things. The goal, the goal would be obviously to guide the, to guide the discussions a bit around certain key aspects, right? So we'll have those ready for you as well. Like, if you're looking for cuts, this is where we would look. If you're looking for new services, this is where we might suggest you go. And then, and of course, you know, anything that you guys have, you can either bring up at the meeting or send us in advance, and we'll try and have things ready for you. But, but yeah, we're looking for, I'm actually quite excited about the new model of consistent dialogue around the budget development as opposed to us building it in the black box and just coming on November fourteenth and say, could you approve this, please, so that it's legal? So I'm looking forward to it, there will be, Celeste will send you guys out a bunch more potential dates for meetings, and we'll try and get those locked down for you.
Council Otis?
I think it'd be kind of neat, I don't know what you think about doing almost a session about budgeting for unexpected items and just giving the public an example over the past, even like, three to five years, and even some of us councilors, of situations that have come up where we've had to last minute find the money and where it's come from and how that's affected us long-term. Because I know there are things that have happened, you know, previous to my time here that have, are still affecting us now, we're playing catch-up. And I think that that's something that's good to kind of let the public in on too because we do have aging infrastructure and we do have, you know, kind of emergency situations that come up with public works often. And Sean's constantly talking about, like, I'm not really sure where we're going to pull that from, but we'll figure it out. But just kind of shedding light on that for the public so they understand that that's a huge challenge when you're trying to recover from that and move forward and still achieve the current strategic goals that you have.
And with respect to that, I think one of the, I mean, we've been saying it for years, the biggest challenge, and it's not just here, it's municipalities across the country, is the infrastructure deficit. And it is the fact that, you know, with all due respect to all the politicians in the room, there have been very few politicians in Canada over the years that have really wanted their picture taken next to a sewer line. Right? And, but, but those are critical pieces of infrastructure that it was much nicer to redirect those funds to the new arena or the new rec center and get your picture taken. And now we see, you know, we see infrastructure failing in the big cities of Calgary, Montreal, and water pouring through the streets because things have been neglected. You know, we're not, knock wood, not experiencing that. But, I mean, the Wall Street sewer break, that's a prime example. Was it on our list for upgrades? Absolutely. It decided it was now the priority. And then now we're currently prepping for the repave. And yeah, we are struggling to say, yes, we need to repave it, it's going to get repaved. But how do we move the money around, or how do we figure out, you know, where we're going to, what things we're not going to do in order to make sure that that happens? The other part of that is, and councillors that have been around for years and listened to me yammer about budget before, I love, I love money in reserves. Reserves are the safety net for everything. And for a municipality this size, we are not as well resourced in our reserves as I would like, as most municipalities would like. So we're going to have to have that conversation between the need to put the money on the ground, under the ground, whatever, versus, against the need to also have that money in the bank account. And it's a delicate balancing act when you're, when you're behind. But yeah, and I do try to have that conversation at the, at open houses as well, just to get that information out there. So it's a really good point.
And also, we like to have those reserves for funding opportunities too, that come up, that we have to match certain percentage funds so that they can be very handy for those as well. Is there any questions, Council? Is that it, Jeff?
Just to the summary of revenue, this, again, this will change when Premier Holt's cabinet decides to sit down and rubber stamp the numbers that the assessors have put together for us. And we'll, but the fun conversations will start when we get, next time we sit down, we talk about the, we'll do a little bit of, hopefully, we'll have the reserves, which is the last little piece of potential revenue for you, sorted. And then we'll be getting into how we look at spending money and, you know, whether we want to change how we do things and things like that. So a bit much more entertaining conversation in the next few meetings, I think, that will be coming up.
Go ahead, Council.
So how's the utility looking?
Utility, the bank account itself is the healthiest it's been in a decade at least due to some arrangements we were able to secure and payments that have been coming in on time and on schedule. Some of the other issues inside the utility continue to be worked on. And they'll probably be, Sean and I have been working on some plans that we will probably bring some ideas forward for you, you guys, for various levels of drastic action on the utility. We, one of the big things is, and Alex is a great asset to us when he sits at the table with us because the utility rates are an impediment to development, we know that. So we need to get those down, and we need to find a way to get those down. So we are working very hard with Alex and Sean and everybody to try and figure out a way to, you know, make sure we're funding the system and the system's healthy, but also find a way to get those rates, individual bills down because the, we, it's much better to get the development than if we can give up a little bit of profit on the, you know, utility. So again, these delicate balancing acts that we keep trying to play. But Alex is a great, a great voice in the room as he's constantly saying, yeah, but, yeah, but, you know, we're saying we need more for this, and we need more for this. And he's saying, yeah, but if you change the rates, it's going to get harder and harder for him and for Peter St. Stephen or the economic development folks everywhere to do their job. So we're hearing them loud and clear, and so we'll be bringing some stuff forward on the utility as well.
Okay, well, I might as well take this opportunity to congratulate Kathy Bockus on her returning back to office as her local MLA. And congratulations to Susan Holt, delegate premier of, our first female premier, I might add, to the Province of New Brunswick. So we're looking forward to working with our new team. And especially when we're talking about these budget items, we're going to need their support greatly, and I'm looking forward to their support and collaboration. And if there's nothing else, I need a mover and secuder to adjourn. Council Otis, Council Highsup, any questions? All's in favor? Motion adjourned at six forty-four.